I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Is there anyone here for a two-minute open forum? Need you to go to the microphone, give me your name and address, please.
Okay, thanks Rick.
Gary Margenroth, and this is not going to take me like it did last time. When I left the podium here on November thirteenth, I said that when I left, I had just information I just got my hands on before I came to the podium. It had to do with an organization, a conference called the Upswell Conference, which led me to an organization called the Independent Sector. And it has to do with this, and I'm just going to read this because it ties right in with what my issue was last time I was here. Nonprofits are among the most trusted institutions in society, which gives us a unique opportunity in advancing the social good for our communities in lots of different ways. The public trust makes our organization particularly successful in promoting civic engagement and voting. Even better, research shows these activities help organizations more effectively advance their missions. This conference, this meeting was held October sixteenth, three weeks before the election, by the Independent Sector. And I, there's more to it than this, I'm just going to leave it with that. But I'm going to ask you guys to do your due diligence. Go to independentsector.org and you'll find the connections to Independent Sector and all the others nefarious stuff that's going on right now with the United Nations agendas, sustainability goals, and everything that's connected to it. And this very well could have had an effect and in implementation, or whatever you want to call it, to what we brought to your attention at Discovery School on November thirteenth. Okay?
All right, thanks. Anyone else?
Yes, sir. Peter Joseph Wilson, eleven oh eight Celebration Drive, Sartell, Minnesota. I had sent an email to the folks on the council and also to Shawna, and I appreciate the response and looking into it. After reviewing it, it seems to be a, I'm trying to use perhaps a correct word, an affirmation that what we said was correct, that it appears to have happened. The question is an interpretation of whether it was permissible or not. So it wasn't, in reviewing this, your response basically told me someone was there who, if I read it, shouldn't have been. Now, it will not be up to me to make that judgment, obviously. But on the other hand, it was a reaffirmation, he was there. And we don't know what, he may or may not have said to someone, that's another matter that hopefully an investigation will determine as to whether other things went on. There was something else that came up today, not prepared to talk about it now, but at the same school regarding this matter, and also at another school regarding a similar, not necessarily what happened here, but a similar type of desk and whether it belonged, not over in, not in Wade Park, so I don't want to go through that. But anyway, to me, whether someone is an employee of a county, of a school district, of the state, if they don't belong there, they don't belong there. Again, I won't be the one making the judgment, but I will be filing complaints on this. Let it go where it goes. And again, it's not, it's not my call, but to me, it doesn't seem right. And I guess I hope that as this progresses, because we've been visiting with different people around the area and different departments, and as such, you know, I hope that if it turns out or starts to appear that this is going down the wrong pike, that you, you get ahead of it before you get behind it. I thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Two-minute open forum. Anyone else? Anyone else? Two-minute open forum. Review and approve council agenda. I don't have anything to add.
No. Move to approve as presented.
Second. Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Consent agenda items. Item A, approve 2019 SEH rates. Item B, approve 2:00 AM liquor license renewal for HR Pestis. Item C, approve charter transfer resolution. Item D, approve charter extension resolution. Item E, approve electrical inspection services agreement. And item F, approve strong beer license for the Great River Educational Theater.
Move to approve.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Item one. Truth in taxation hearing. The Wade Park City Council will hold a public hearing on its budget and on the amount of property taxes it is proposing to collect to pay for the cost of services the city will provide in 2019. The proposed 2019 budget is $7,968,672. The proposed budget represents an 8.6% increase from 2018 to 2019. The proposed 2019 levy is $7,690,912. The proposed levy represents a 3.7% increase from 2018 to 2019. The public is invited to speak, and the public hearing is opened at 6:36. Is there anyone here to speak about the budget? Truth in taxation meeting. Anyone? If not, we can have you use a motion to close the meeting.
Close.
Close the public hearing, I mean.
Motion.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. The public hearing is closed at 6:37. Council, your wishes.
No, we have multiple.
No action?
No action. No, the, the actual 2019 budget and levy will actually be adopted at the 2017. This is just the public hearing.
That was on December seventeenth.
I'm sorry.
December seventeenth.
December. I apologize.
Not twenty-seventh.
No.
We're a little late.
Backed eating a little bit.
All right, yeah, we'll do that next meeting.
Well, just a kind of a quick deal on this is, we didn't have to increase our levy again this year. So this would be the fifth year in a row now, I believe, that we haven't had to increase our tax levy.
Tax rate.
Tax rate.
Your levy, yep.
So, we're trying to do our best for you all, and hopefully next year, we can hold it back again for you.
All right. Item B, APO Joint Powers Agreement. Brian?
Good evening, council members. My name is Brian Leeson. I'm the executive director.
Brian, could you talk into the microphone, please?
I'm the executive director of the St. Cloud Area Planning Organization. I'm here today because my board has approved a set of changes to the Joint Powers Agreement that establishes the APO. As I think many of you know, the APO is the board that is responsible for programming federal funds for surface transportation projects throughout the metropolitan area, the five major cities, parts of the three counties. The current board is comprised of thirty-six members, eleven members for the city of St. Cloud, three members for everybody else. In April of 2017, the board asked me to develop a set of, of options for how the board might restructure itself. As you can imagine, if you had a council of thirty-six members, sometimes it's even difficult to find a day when everybody can meet. And there's a point where you have so many cooks in the kitchen that decision-making is, you know, it's not efficient. And so I developed a short white paper for about a year. I worked with the board. And this past October, they approved the changes as shown in, in your attachments and your, in your packets. The big change, of course, is that the board would restructure itself from thirty-six members to twelve. So St. Cloud would get three members, everyone else would get one member. And so that's for your consideration. I'm now going around to every jurisdiction involved and asking for their approval. And your approval would make you part of the APO. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Swarma? You've got, you should have the correction or the changes here. Most of them are just pretty much cosmetic changes, except the biggest change is exactly what you said is.
Members, yeah.
Members go, percentage-wise, I don't know that it changes much. It just goes that, there's not as many as the general meeting, and there's a couple of times, in fact, not the last time, but the time before, we didn't even have a quorum at that general meeting, so.
Right.
There wasn't anything done, so it gets harder and harder, and I think that's what led to this.
And then we had to have an emergency meeting following that because the business still had to get done, so.
So questions for Brian?
I just, I was reading the, the document that you developed. I think I had some confusion on the voting rights. Who was going to vote and on what issues they would be voting on?
So every jurisdiction, like I said, St. Cloud gets three reps.
Yes.
Every other jurisdiction gets one.
One.
So, following the approval process, I'll contact all of the jurisdictions, and you'll, you'll tell me who your rep is, and then you get to appoint an alternate for that person as well.
So you're going to have city government representatives, agency representatives, and according to this, some other non-agency representatives?
That's possible. So when you look at MPOs around the country, it's not unusual to see state DOTs, for example, sitting on an MPO board. Not always as a voting body participant. But because, because the business of the APO, or of the MPO, is to basically take state and federal funds and spend them on transportation projects, sometimes it's nice to have them in the room, right, to say, is this project eligible? What are you going to do on the state highway? You know, questions like that. So it's, it's possible that the, the APO reconstituted could invite agencies to participate.
With no voting rights?
As, as an ex-official member.
Either as voting or non-voting, it's up to the board to make that decision.
That's my confusion is the voting.
The Metropolitan Transit Commission has to be on the board, that's a federal requirement, so Metro Bus will be there. But, you know, Minnesota Pollution Control, the state DOT, other agencies that are stakeholders in transportation could participate, but it would be up to the board to make that decision.
At this time, my feeling is that they would be just, they would be members but not a voting member at this time. That could change.
Yeah.
But that, that would be up to.
By voting, and now you reduce the number of people voting. That's why I kind of, I don't like the whole idea myself, so.
But that was a difficulty for me too.
Yeah.
Like I say, I mean.
Then all of a sudden, I got people who aren't part of cities voting on things that impact us, or maybe not, does not impact the city of Wade Park.
Transportation-wise?
Yes.
If, if we don't approve this, then we just, we're not going to be members.
Correct.
I mean, to be real honest with you, I have very mixed feelings about this also. Percentage-wise, I don't know if we come up any better or worse as a city of Wade Park, to be honest with you. Maybe we're better, maybe, you know, maybe the odds are actually better for us if, if we're going to vote against St. Cloud. And, and it's been very good that we don't vote against anybody. We usually vote for what's better for the area.
And, and from, I think, from the far as the city of Wade Park's representation, I think we always do a pretty good job of being in attendance. So this lack of not having a quorum, I don't think stems from the city of Wade Park, not necessarily.
I, I would agree.
So.
You know, the other thing is, and to be real honest with you, because I sit on the executive, at this time, I sit on the executive board and not the full board. And I don't remember the last time the executive board made a, a motion, made a, made a, any kind of a movement that the full board didn't approve. So it, it, it seems, it seems like we're doing things twice.
Yep, it sure does.
And I think that's where it came from. And, and I don't disagree with the numbers, but I, in the years I've been on there, I don't see that those numbers have made any difference.
And in terms of the proportionality of the representations, so if you think about it, so St. Cloud right now has eleven members out of thirty-six, so they're about one-third of the total. They're going down to three out of twelve, which is one-fourth. So their representation is actually decreasing with these changes.
Percentage-wise, it went down.
Yeah.
Yep. I'm not, I mean, I'm not too concerned in today's world, and I mean, tomorrow's world changes, and so, but.
Right.
In today's world, I'm not concerned about that.
That, that's exactly my fear, is tomorrow's world.
But everybody has a vote, because, you know, if we don't like what's happening there, we can go to the executive board and ask them to change it back. And then with a, with a vote of the executive board, we can go backwards. In tomorrow's world, we could get a new policy again.
New joint powers agreement.
Well, yeah, not the executive board, but the, the board, the three and the one-one-one, whatever we want to call it.
Right.
I'm still calling it the executive board, but we can change it. We just go to, we just have, we have fifteen members, and nine of them say we're going to, we want to change, we get it changed.
That's right. The board, the board is in charge of the APO. It's what they decide.
Well, I mean, if, if, in the future, if Wade Park or Sock Rabbits or Sartell, or whoever doesn't like it, I mean, they can bring that argument to that, to that board and say, what do you think? We don't like this, this, this isn't working. With fifty, fifty-one percent, we can take it back to our councils and change it.
Correct.
Brian, in your current arrangement, do you have the ability for these outside officials from the city to be a part of it if the, if the group, if the APO board chose to be a part of it?
So currently, as I said, Metro Bus is part because it's a federal requirement. The, each jurisdiction has the option of appointing a non-elected official to the big board, to the board of thirty-six. I don't know currently that anybody is, but there was at one time a provision made for a, I forget the wording in the, in the agreement, but a, a nonprofit, a, you know, a stakeholder group that's not a jurisdiction to be part of the board, but they haven't had a member for as long as I've been here.
So that's similar language to what was before, already existing?
Yeah, I mean, I, in terms of the option being there, for, for a non-government being on the board, yeah, that was there before.
Any more questions for Brian? What's your wishes, council?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second? I'll second it. This is going to die in a dead heat. All in favor?
All right.
Opposed?
Yes.
Goes two to two. We don't have our fifth council member. I, I think what, what, what our council needs to realize is, I don't think we lose anything by this. And if we don't belong, we lose federal money. Well, think, think, think very hard and long about what you just did.
Well, I will call for a new vote.
Yet.
I will call for a new vote. Reconsider.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the Joint Powers Agreement as.
Well, wait a minute. You've already voted. You're going to have to.
I got to get a new motion.
I just, I'm just making a new motion that we approve the Joint Powers Agreement, though I have strong reservations about some of the issues on that, which I've expressed tonight.
Now, is there a second?
All second.
Further discussion. The motion now is to approve the APO Joint Powers Agreement. Is all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes.
Three to one. Now you got it.
Well, the problem is, is like Rick said, if we don't belong to this, you don't get a say into a lot of the area reconstruction, new roads, new projects that could go in. Whereas you have a little say in that right now.
Okay, so they're forcing it down our throat. That's why, but that even makes it worse.
Forcing what?
I, I think there's a.
The only way you get.
I don't have any other option.
There's a, you can sit on my, my place on that board. I willingly give you that. So if you want that position, we have new positions coming up in January. If you want to sit on that board, I will definitely.
I've thought about it before, so.
I think we do, we do have that power yet, because we still have that, we still have a checks and balance there. If we don't like it, we can, all we got to do is persuade seven or eight of the other entities to, to vote with us.
Right.
All right.
And I, and I will, I agree with you, Mayor. I think that the history of the decision-making has been one of, of, you know, of cooperation, of, of looking at issues in terms of regional impact.
The broad base.
Not necessarily the impact to a specific jurisdiction. And, and I think that's the intent of the, of an organization like this, so.
And that, in, in the other respect, that's sad that the other cities of people who are paying members don't show up.
Well, that's up to their city.
How, how can I, how can I defend that when you're paying dues to an organization and you don't show up to your own meeting?
And it's only three a year, so it's not like it's every month.
I'm as confused by it as you are. I don't know.
So to me, the original system worked. We showed up.
Well, we didn't. That was a problem, and Brian said that. It's, it's over with, but that's, that Brian said that. The last, the two times before that, when we didn't have a quorum.
I am saying we showed up.
Then a week later, we had to have a special meeting to do business.
The city of Wade Park shows up.
That doesn't make sense either, so. All right, thanks.
We show up.
Thank you, council members.
Yep. All right, item C, interim use permit and variance for mining, MTL Partners, Johnson Materials. Who's got it? Who wants it? Anybody have any questions on the council?
Yeah, I got a whole list.
Why don't we let John start with that?
Yep.
We can give a run through here. Shawna, if you would please toggle to my station here, I can put it on the screen.
Are you on the fixture?
I'm on the, the hard connection here. I can start while it loads up. The first image that will be on the screen is the, the general location map of the property. This is a request for interim use permit and a variance for a five-year mining term for Johnson Materials, Inc. With permission of the property owners, MTL Partners. This property is along Granite View Road and Highway fifteen, north of the roundabouts. And it's, again, a five-year mining request for a total of about 6.5 acres of granite area, granite outcroppings on the property, totaling about 206,000 cubic yards of granite. The applicants have actually been coordinating with city staff since earlier this year when we were approached regarding the feasibility and viability of the project. The intent is that the business would extract the granite outcroppings and break that up off-site for use in a reconstruction project scheduled in the coming couple of years for Interstate ninety-four in the region. As a result of the mining, the end-use reclamation plan would then make the property more marketable and readily developable by taking that significant, significant granite areas that are currently impeding the development interest. And right now, if it were to be, to be developed today, it would result in increased cost for any form of development in that area. The end-use would really make it more appealing and economically viable for long-term permanent development. There's two primary sites located within the, the plans that were submitted. I'll run through the narrative here from the applicant. You can see the quarry site A and quarry site B located at the north and south ends of the property, respectively. The intent is that the first site would take between one and three years to complete with pending approval and adhering with the terms of the interim use permit. Project would, work would be projected to begin in March of 2019. After site A would be completed, they'd move to the secondary site B. I would recommend that the initial interim use permit term, if approved, be limited to five years. And at that time, if it were necessary, it could be extended with additional review approval if needed, assuming compliance with all the terms of approval and that there's no unaddressed issues. The intent would be for daytime operations only, 6:00 AM, 6:00 PM. No processing on-site. That was something that was considered earlier on, but was ultimately removed from the consideration. We've had several discussions, myself and the city engineer and public works director, with the applicant regarding the trucking of, of the material out of the site in order to minimize the impact to Granite View Road. As a condition of approval, staff is recommending that a formal circulation plan would be submitted for staff review approval, but it is something we feel could be accomplished without overly negative impact to the road there. Staff did forward the request and review materials for review by city consultant Bill Welbus, who has performed analysis and monitoring tasks for the city associated with Martin Marietta. He has reviewed the request and didn't have any major concerns with it. He's noted it seemed pretty straightforward. His feedback and information was included as part of the packet. He did have some suggested conditions of the interim use permit, which were incorporated into the pretty numerous conditions of approval. Just given the scope of the area, there's relatively few parcels immediately adjacent and a limited impact to them. The planning commissioner heard this request at their November meeting. There were no concerns or really major questions directed to the planning commissioner or the applicants. We did have just some general questions from a neighbor or two, but no, no concerns at all. There's also a mining request, variance for the setback to allow mining within the thirty feet of the public right-of-way. Typically, the, the ordinance, it has a thirty-foot setback to prevent impact to the adjacent right-of-way. There was actually some discussion with city staff as to whether it would potentially be beneficial to allow mining within the right-of-way itself, since it could have potentially reduced our need to remove granites in the right-of-way, make it easier for us to get utilities in when the time would be right for that. But just because of the variables and not knowing the projected timeline for utilities to go in, we decided just to forego that. The request for the mining in the right-of-way is to specifically get at the large knot of granite within that thirty-foot setback area, which would be particularly problematic for eventual end-use. I do see that as a viable, practical difficulty, just because it would really hinder the use of the property to not remove that when otherwise mobilized. It makes sense to take it out when it's there for the taking and get that out of the way for future development. I won't go through the individual recommendations just due to the, the length. The applicants did not have any concerns or objections to the suggested conditions, so I would recommend approval of the interim use permit with the conditions as outlined in your staff report and approval of the variance as requested.
All right, any questions? Mike?
Yeah, I have a quick question for you, John.
All right, Chuck. I'll get you yet, Vic.
Well, I don't hear really well.
Good, because I screwed up your name four times.
Yeah, I was just, I was just looking at the suggested motions on here, and I noticed there's a motion for the variance included right after the motion for the mining. Is that motion for the variance, are you still considering that? You have a suggested motion for variance here.
I, I separated them specifically because they're, they're two separate requests. Functionally, it doesn't really, you could, you could approve the, you have the option to approve one but not the other. And with the variance, you can also approve to a lesser degree, as well as option to deny. So if, if the council, say, has reservations about mining within up to the right-of-way, they don't want to go right up to it, you could maintain a lesser setback than the typical thirty feet. That's an option too, but I, I separate them out when they're separate requests.
I appreciate that. I have a real, a real opposition to the variance for the mining up to the right-of-way, into the right-of-way. I have an opposition to that.
I got a few other questions. Might as well start at the top. Number thirteen, the applicant bears responsibility for any damages and/or injuries associated with fly rock. How does this company provoke, propose to keep that fly rock problem from occurring?
That specifically is, is more a function of the, the blasting. That's one of the the rationals, rationale for requiring the blasting plan and the, the plan for opening the pit. A lot of these factors, we would get more into pending an approval before we would let them go. It doesn't necessarily make sense to have the, the entirety of every condition met ahead of the, of a council review. I believe the applicant has a, a rep, representative. Uh, I, I believe the applicant has a, a representative present. They can perhaps speak more to the, uh, prevention of fly rock or, or anything being blasted.
I would like to hear from that, on that, because with the mining we have in town, you know, it's unfortunate, but we did have a few incidences where even in a large quarry situation, you have fly rock once in a great while. And that has to do with the blasting and so on and so forth. Um, and being as close as they're going to be to our public roadways and a major highway, um, I, I think that's going to be a real problem to help prevent that problem. Um, another one is the stormwater runoff for that particular area. Uh, reading your notes here was supposedly they're going to build a storm retention pond. But however, we've had problems in the past with that when we have large amounts of rain out there that run off into another runway. How are we going to keep that from going and to get permission from the DNR to create this type of, um, run, uh, water runoff area? I believe that has to go through the DNR. Am I not right, Terry, or does that have to be in, or can we have it engineered for runoff?
And, and I can, I had, I'll allow Terry to, to jump in too, but we do have that as part of the, uh, conditions sixteen and nineteen that, uh, it, it is subject to the DNR review approval, uh, any other applicable regulations, uh, as well as the stormwater pollution, pollution prevention plan that's subject to our review approval as well. So that's, you know, that's something that we would, uh, get into later pending, you know, and appro, uh, approval from the council.
Is that something that Terry would have to get into the engineering portion and we would bill them for the services he would provide and we do not have to forego that expense?
I, uh, one, uh, yes, we would review their stormwater, uh, pollution prevention plan. I, I'm not clear as to whether the city generally, uh, charges that back, so.
Yep. We have a land disturbance permit and then they'll be monitoring for this and that's charged back to them, so.
Okay, um, the land restoration, uh, bond was set at three hundred and fifty dol, or three hundred and fifty thousand. I think for projects of this side, um, our bonds for the other projects we've done in town here have been at five hundred thousand, and I think we should keep it at that amount because land restoration can be expensive if in fact these people would ever back out of it. And I would assume it would run much, way over three hundred and fifty thousand.
You're correct in that it is, is expensive, because I, I honestly don't have any, uh, parallel experience with, you know, a, a reclaim, a reclamation bond for a similar request. I, I deferred to Mr. Welbus's review and his, uh, his recommendation for, for bond amount, and he recommended for something of this scale and, and general conditions, that amount of three hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, he also recommended per square yard restoration, I believe, or, or cubic, whatever it was, to be measured as restoration, but
Yeah.
I, I would like to see that bond value go up to at least five hundred thousand.
If, if the council's more comfortable with that, I have no objections to that.
It would be, I, if it was up to me, I'd go a million, but, you know, trying to keep in sync with what we've, uh, given to the other people, like in the solar areas and things like that, five hundred thousand would be the minimum. The, the road problem out there, I think is going to be a huge problem in five years of use hauling this heavy walk, rock constantly. I mean, we just got done in a three-hour meeting talking about our roads and, and things as to being rebuilt, and that road out there really is not, how would I put it, put up to the best standards. It, it's adequate to be used for what it's used for now. Um, I believe it's a nine-ton road, but with added use of that road out there, I think it's going to tor, tear the heck out of it. Um, I notice you do have it in here that the, um, let's see, that is under number eighteen, I believe. About the debris and the removal and, and there's a couple of other paragraphs about they should take care of the road if a problem does occur. Is that something we're going to be able to enforce? I mean, rebuilding a road is a huge cost.
Well, let me speak about the road. The, the portion that they're allowed to use will only be the new thirty-third street portion. They're not going to be allowed to go north onto Granite View North towards, towards Way Park. That road was built at a ten-ton standard, so I, that, I'm, we're comfortable with the road and they'll be able to take that.
So they'll be using the south exit on the number B blasting area?
Correct, yep.
That would be the only place to enter?
Enter and exit. So they'll go through the roundabouts on the fifteen headed towards down ninety-four.
Um, and, and finally, I'm concerned about the blasting being that close to residential area. Um, we're within a half mile of a residential area. You got some large farms there. We have complaints from the blasting on this one over here already. When they start blasting that out there, it, you're going to be close to residents. I mean, I don't know if the residents understand how this could impact them.
Well, I, I think, I think realistically, at some point, this is going to be blasted one way or another. I mean,
Not for five years. If they're going to blast it and they want to redo it, or if we're going to blast, you'll have a couple of months of blasting and it'll be done and over with. We're going to be blasting for five years out here. Um, maybe not on an everyday basis, but there will be blasting. And I think that should be a concern for the locals and.
I don't want to speak for the applicant. She's approached the, the podium and if, if the council wishes to allow her to speak, you, you're welcome to do so. You know, the, the public, the public hearing component was completed at the planning commission.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Lori Johnson. I'm, uh, the, uh, office manager for the business that winter couldn't be here tonight. He's indisposed, um, Jeff Johnson. But I, I think when people think mining and granite, everybody's mind rushes to Martin Marietta. That's not what this project is going to be. We're not even going to be processing the granite on the site. We're not going to have retail or wholesale sales. It's simply, we're, yes, there's going to be blasting occasionally to break up the granite, because otherwise you can't move it. And then we're going to be loading it on the trucks and moving it off the site. So it makes it so that later that it can be developed. Like you said, right now, to bring in city sewer and water would be literally impossible. I mean, absolutely impossible. So they could never develop the site. You could never use it for tax base or anything right now. It's just sitting there. It's a big pile of rock. So basically, that's all we're going to be doing is occasionally blasting, not a regular basis thing, and then removing the granite and taking it to another site to process it. So it's not going to be trucks all day long, every day, constant, like Martin Marietta, where it's retail and wholesale sales of people coming in. It's simply going to be our own trucks coming in, taking the granite and taking it out. That's it. So I just wanted, so I think that approaches some of the road use questions and some of the blasting questions. It's, it's a very different situation than, uh, on every, uh, like a Martin Marietta that's open every day, all day for retail and wholesale sales.
How deep are you going to go?
Uh, as deep as the granite is, we really don't know.
Yeah, but I mean, there's, there's a realistic point. If it's down fifty feet, you're not, you don't need to go down fifty feet. Where, where's your cutoff?
I don't, John, was that established?
I believe it was referenced. Uh, let me take a look here.
And are you, are you open, are you going to haul three hundred and sixty-five days a year, or are you just a, a summer operation and shut it down for the winter?
Um, well, usually with these types of, um, operations, they can go year-round because the ground, the, the rock doesn't freeze. Um, but no, we weren't planning to work on the weekends. It was going to be like a Monday through Friday.
But it could be January, February. It could be all, it could be twelve months out of the year.
Right, right, except during, there might be times during like road restrictions where we would be unable to haul, but otherwise, yeah.
I have the, sorry, I apologize. I have the, I have the depths. The depths would be approximately to a maximum of forty feet, um, forty, forty-one feet at one site and thirty-one feet at the, at the second site.
Okay. Council, any other questions?
And then I just wanted to approach the variance question as well. Um, again, like, uh, John had said, if we don't go up to what we're proposing, it would again make it more difficult for the city. Um, we're, we're not doing that to be greedy and say we want all that granite. It's simply, we felt it would be beneficial to the city to go up to that point. Otherwise, you'd have this huge clump of granite sitting right there. And then when you try to bring in city sewer and water, it would be very difficult, so. So that was the, that was why the variance exists, the request for that, so.
Vic, you had a question?
Well, I just have a quick question. Uh, you talk about bearing responsibility for, uh, damages and injuries associated with that. How do you plan to do that? I mean, somebody's driving by and a window in the car gets broken. Um, are they going to drive around for a year waiting to get the window repaired? How do you plan to do that to deal with problems?
Right, the, the blasting companies are, uh, it's not us, we won't be doing that. We hire a blasting company. And they always work with the local city, um, uh, law enforcement and basically, usually they actually literally close the roads. Yeah, and then they blast and then they open the road back up.
Okay, I'm comfortable.
The blasting company is also going to be responsible for, um, um, any complaints taken by residents? If there is any damage or anything done to residential housing in the area? Um, you know, we get complaints all the time. And secondly, the blasting company should provide the city, I'm assuming, with a blasting schedule?
Yep, that's one of the conditions. Annual, annual estimated schedule of blasting and records to be kept of the blast events as well.
As far as the amount and so much used for blasting?
Yep, dates, volumes, uh, uh, depths, those, those sorts of items, um, not pounds of explosives. So, so if there is something that, that goes, uh, not according to plan, that we have some records in place of, of the event to help fill in the blanks. And those are all, those are all aspects that were, uh, recommended by Mr. Welbus and, uh, very similar to some of the conditions that were in place for Martin Marietta.
Council, anything else? There's more people. Does anybody want to speak to this at all? I mean, it's not a public hearing, so I, I don't have to do this, but.
Go ahead. I guess this is the first I've heard of this and it, it's, it's really disturbing. And Mike, I'm going to give you a A plus on bringing a couple of things up here. It was a number of years ago, I live in the Sunward Park area, and we've had a lot of problems with water. And Terry came over and Terry and I have had our ins and outs on it. That's one of the issues, and you brought it up already. What are they going to do to control the water? But there's another concern here that I have and, uh, and you guys have brought it up here a number of times already, and that's about property and effects on, on the neighborhoods. And I think that this is going to have a huge effect in our neighborhoods as a disturbance. Not only the truck traffic, tr, I, I was in the trucking industry for twenty-eight years. I know what kind of damages they do and I, you guys should all see it when, when heavy trucks drive on blacktop. It destroys it. Vic, you brought it up. But in our neighborhoods today, there's a lot of people that work from home now. And because they work from home, they have to work in an environment that's, they, they work, because it's quiet, but they have to also be involved with uh, correspondence with their company they're working for, what have you, and distractions are distractions. And I'm going to say this on behalf of my wife. She works from home for the hospital. And believe it or not, she sits and she has to listen to stuff all day long and it's some, it's hard to hear, but even the Martin Marietta blasting over here, affect, we can hear it and she can, it affects her at times at the house, depending on how things are working. That's only three-quarters of a mile from our house. And, uh, there's a lot of variables here that I think you guys need to stop and take a look at before you go and pass anything here. I was appalled when, uh, when this was brought up here and I'm sitting here listening to it and it's like, holy cow. We're doing this for the sake of money and development, but it's a rock pile. What do you, it, it, things just don't, don't feel right about it. You're going to dig the hole forty feet deep and what are you going to fill it with? Dirt, and you've still got rock underneath that acts like an aquarium. And you're going to put in water drainage and everything, and you've already, we've already got a problem in the Sunward Park area with water drainage. We, we discussed that here a number of years ago with all the, what we were told were the hundred-year floods. And if we keep, we talked about it back then, if we keep putting more hard surface to the south of us, it's going to create more water runoff. It doesn't soak in anymore. I think you guys are, I'm going to, I'm going to hope and I'm going to pray that you'll, you'll sit down and, and, and really study this a little more than just going, yep, I approve it tonight. I think you need to really look into this a little deeper. And Mike, I have to, hats off to you, man. You brought up some great points in what you, when this, after the presentation was done. So thank you.
Alright, council, anything else? Somebody want to move to approve or deny the interim use permit? I'll move to approve it, because without this, I don't think, I don't know how that, that, that piece of property gets developed.
I, I don't see how it gets developed either. I even had a certain comfort level with going beyond the property line, the road easement, because when we run sewer and water through there, we're, this is exactly what we're going to hit. So we're going to, we're going to have a firsthand view of how we get services out to that area. And it has to run parallel to that road. So without them going even closer to the road so we can run our pipes in there, they could save us, I don't know, hundreds of, to a million dollars in excavation to get them pipes alongside that roadway.
Well, the problem is that, you know.
I have a motion. I haven't got a second yet for discussion.
Don't have a second, so we can't discuss.
I'll second for a discussion.
Alright. I drove out there and I just happened to, I thought about this. I drove there yesterday. Um, you know, the granite is right up to the road in both spots. Taking it all the way out into a zero tolerance up right into the road, I don't know at this time if it's going to be a good idea or not. I don't, even with a zero
That's.
up to the would be kind of difficult, I think, because you go another ten feet, you're right on the road already anyway. But, you know, is it a good idea that we would remove it? It probably would be. However, I don't know how in the heck we can do it without doing some damage to the roadway out there, even through the blasting and things, so I don't, you know. You start blasting things, you don't know what's going to fall apart, you know?
Them, the guys who do it have a pretty good idea.
Yeah, these, they're not you and me blasting. These are the guys that do it for a living. They, they blast, they blasted, uh, a hundred and fifty feet, not even, from my house when they put in Fourth Avenue. And I'm still here. My house is still standing.
We blast a lot.
Yeah, I, I mean, I can tell you that these guys are professionals. I, you know, we were on a project, not last summer, summer before last, you know, right in the heart of, right, right in the heart of downtown Sock Rapids, uh, blasting right next to the Coburn store there. It, it, it sends a ripple, but, but they design these, uh, blasts so that it minimizes that ripple. I, I don't want to speak for the applicant here, but you know, obviously you have rock at the surface. The way they generally treat that is they put these tire mats down. The way they generally treat that is they put these tire mats down to try to, you know.
Mitigate the.
Keep the fly rock from leaving sight. Uh, sometimes it, you know, uh, something happens and, and a, and a rock escapes. And I, you know, uh, again, I'm not here defending the applicant. I'm just telling you what my experience is. With regard to the utilities, I think Bill would tell you, you know, the city prefers to have those utilities actually within the roadway. And so, you know, mining up to the right of way, in my opinion, really doesn't have any effect on the utilities. I think we'll still have to blast for utilities when we, when we put them in, presuming that we would put them in, in the road. So you guys have been around this city a long time and seen a lot of blasting, uh, you know, it can be.
All my life.
Yeah.
And I worked on Martin Marietta, so I've seen it firsthand and I see, see exactly how they do it.
Conversely, sometimes things happen.
And this is gonna be on a micro scale compared to Martin Marietta.
Uh, yeah, yeah, I don't.
Micro scale.
All right, I got a motion.
And to answer my question, he can look at item number eight.
The motion right now is just to approve the interim, uh, yeah, the interim use permit, not the variance.
Okay.
Just the, just the interim use permit. I have a motion as second. Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Three to one, it passes. Now I'll take a motion to approve or deny the variance.
I'm going to move to approve.
I'll second it. I think it, it only makes sense that we would let them take out the rock instead of us pay for it.
Do you want to allow them to come up on public right of way to remove rock? I know that's not in this variance, however, um, if you would approve it, I mean, you know, what they're doing is a good idea. I just have a lot of questions that didn't need, didn't get answered. But however, this variance question would be not just a zero to public right of way, but allow them to go on public right of way to remove it is, if that's what they wish to do. Maybe she can answer a little bit.
I guess, I mean, it would come to that situation. I don't really know, just off the top of my head of, in that case, that's. But I would think, no, I would think we would be working from the interior of the mine area, the, you know, the site area.
But if we will allow you, give you a variance to mine on public right of way?
Right of way.
There's a section of probably, I don't know what it is, ten to fifteen feet, both areas where the rock is right up and actually damn near in the road. But would you want to mine that area out as well? Or is the zero?
I guess when that time comes, that would be where we would be kind of back.
Now is the time to decide.
Well, I don't know because I'm not gonna be the ones running the machines. I work in the office. But I'm assuming they would be working from the center of, you know, the land out towards that edge. Um, so I would not think they would be out here in the right of way working in, uh, you know what I'm saying?
Why, why can't the right of way issue be decided at a later date after they've already done some of the work?
That was gonna be my question for attorney was, can we change a variance later? If we approve the variance now and then they get into it and, and, and they say we can go closer, can we, can we, can we change a variance? Can we extend it, expand it?
I believe what you would do is have a new request.
Yeah, but can we do that?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I got it. Can we do, I'm asking for legal opinion now.
So, uh, I suppose I should put a name of the director.
Yep.
Wanna turn your mic on, I think?
That work better?
There you are.
All right, real good. Thank you. Uh, my name is Paul Storm. I'm a new attorney at Rukuski Hansmeyer. And quite honestly, I have to tell you that Gordon had me take a seat for him today. And he said that you're not allowed to authorize or approve anything. I was, I was hired about two weeks ago, so. I, I'm unfortunately in a position of, I'm not sure that I'm able to provide an answer to that question.
I would think we could change that variance if he came in later and wanted a variance. It's just, to me, it would be a variance to the variance.
Yeah, I, I would say that there's no reason, we'd have to follow the whole process again. Um, I, I would recommend against trying to backpedal on a variance, but we could always make it more or allow a greater depth.
More lenient, more lenient.
Yeah, we don't wanna approve it at, say, zero, zero setback and then come back and all of a sudden, they've already undertaken work and then we decide it's gonna be a fifteen foot setback when they're already in it. But there's no reason we can't make it, uh, more flexible in the future without, it's not unlike what we do with the plat where if it changes, we come back and redo it.
All right. Well, my only, you know, you know, with the water and sewer, we talked about several different ways of getting it out there. One was putting a berm along Highway fifteen at one time and putting all that underneath that berm. You know, this was years back, if you remember right, Terry. I don't know, but, uh-huh. So I don't, you know, it's, is it a good idea probably to remove it if they want the granite? And now's the time to do it. But like I said, I, you know, my questions were on the major portion of, of all these other little things that are going on. And I guess that was approved, so.
You can see on, just as, as a reference point on screen here, you can see the, the, uh, the property limits here and the, the, thick black line and the dash line here. You can see how the, the granite knot, as it's being called, extends kind of into that, into the right of way area. Just as a, a visual.
Uh, Mayor and Counsel, let me, uh, let me offer this. Uh, as Terry had mentioned, the sewer and water, uh, should be in the roadway way. The sewer should absolutely be in the road right of way. Uh, just for the fact that if we have to maintain that line with, with our jet truck, we can't get to it if it's in a ditch. And most of the time that's gonna happen either in the winter or in the spring and so that's gonna be a problem for us. The other thing is, as far as mining into the right of way, it's not really gonna help the city at all. We're talking about a longitudinal line. I mean, we can blast a fairly narrow trench through there if we have to. In this area of the outcrop, more than likely, the, the developer's probably not gonna bring a service in there anyway. It's, it's so shallow. So he'll plan his service stubs into that property at, at other opportune, easier sites, once they figure out what they have out there for rock. So i- in my opinion, I think it, it's, uh, you know, stay at the property line. It'd be, and if there's something that comes on the road in the future, if you have an ability to look at it down then, then we can look at it there. But at this point, I mean, my recommendation is that you just stay right at the property line. So staff recommends approval of the variance as requested reduction of setback from right of way for mining purposes from thirty feet to zero feet. Is that what we want? Or do we want the thirty foot?
It would be thirty feet from the right of way or up to, up to the right of way line.
I believe I asked that question earlier.
Yeah, so I, but I just wanna make it darn verified. Okay, so it's up to the right of way line?
Yes. Yeah, that would, that would be the request is to take it from thirty foot down to zero feet.
From the right of way. Do I have a motion in a second yet? Carl, this has been only a day long.
Frank and Rick.
Okay, so I have a motion in a second to approve the variance. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Whoops, opposed?
No.
Three to one, it passes. All right, good luck. All right, review and approve bills.
I have one little question that sticks out. There, it was for a skid load of rental for the park. Do they, do Baybrew staff go rent equipment and then bill it to the city?
We rented that for moving ag lime onto the existing ball fields that we salvage so we didn't tear up the fields ahead tracks.
Oh, and you don't have a track?
We didn't have a track, so that way we could do it.
Makes sense.
All right, anything else on the bills?
Move to pay the bills.
Second, further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Car, uh, Sean?
I don't have anything.
I don't have anything.
Neither do I. We are adjourned at seven twenty-nine.